All right, good evening. I'll call this August 8th, 2017, meeting of the Powhatan County School Board to order. Ms. Wilson, I would ask that you let your minutes reflect that Ms. Ayers, Ms. Emel, and I are present for the meeting this evening. Mr. Cole is participating electronically as approved at our prior workshop. Mr. Kunkka is not present this evening. He's called away out of the county on pressing personal business. At this point, I would again welcome everyone to the meeting, and I would ask if we would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. Ms. Emel, you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this wonderful evening. Thank you for our weather. Thank you for this nation that we live in, for our great state and our county. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and for those that protect and ensure that we continue to enjoy them each day. And I name and pro. Amen.
Amen.
At this point, that takes us to the approval of the draft agenda. Are there any members that would like to make changes or additions to the agendas Is there a motion to approve the draft agenda?
I'll make motion we approve tonight's agenda.
Wait just a second. We do need to remove one item from the agenda.
All right. Ms. Emel, would you object to withdrawing your motion?
I would be happy to withdraw my motion.
Ms. Ayers?
We need to remove item 6E from the agenda.
Okay.
I will make a second to that motion.
So we have motion a second to remove item 6E from our agenda this evening. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to the motion? Motion carries four, zero. Any other changes necessary to the agenda? All right, thank you, Ms. Ayers. Ms. Emel, do you have a motion at this point?
Make a motion we accept the...
The agenda is presented.
Thank you. The agenda is presented.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a second? As amended, I'm sorry.
As amended.
Is there a second to Ms. Emel's motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Takes us to the minutes. We'll need to vote on the minutes separately. I have a note that we will need to separate the 7:00 PM meeting minutes from June 13th from the remainder of the minutes so we can vote on the first group. My note is that Mr. Cole was absent on June 13th for the 7:00 PM meeting. So is...at this point, we will vote on the meeting minutes from June 13th, the 5:00 PM meeting, and the June 27th meeting. All members were present for that meeting. Any questions regarding the minutes before I vote? All right, no motions required for minutes. All in favor of the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That takes us to the June 13th, 7:00 PM minutes. Mr. Cole was absent for that meeting.
Make a motion to accept.
I thought you said we don't need...
All right, motion's not required for minutes, as I understand. So all in favor of the minutes from the June 13th, 7:00 PM meeting? Vote aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. So Ms. Wilson will note that Mr. Cole has abstained from the vote on the June 13th, 7:00 PM minutes. Any opposed? None. The motion carries three, zero. Thank you. That takes us to our first public comment period of the evening. At this point, anyone wishing to speak to the board, delegations or individuals requesting to be heard can approach the podium. There is a time limit of three minutes per individual and five minutes per group with a 30-minute total time limit. We would ask anyone that approaches the board to speak, please address your comments to the full board, and we would ask that you identify yourself both by name and address. Public comment period is open. Once again, anyone wishing to make public comment to the board, please approach the Seeing no movement, I'll close the first public comment period of the evening. That takes us to our first presentation. Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Dr. Amahundro to please come up. We have a presentation for the board and the public on our summer programs. As the board is well aware, we offer a wide range of opportunities for our students over the summer, and Dr. Amahundro, as well as Michelle Martin and Martha Powers, who are our two summer school coordinators at the high school and/or secondary and the elementary level respectively, are going to take us through this presentation to highlight some of the accomplishments of our students and the programs they participated in. Dr. Amahundro?
Thank you. And since you just shared what I was going to share about these ladies, I'm going to turn the program over to Dr. Powers at this point to talk about the elementary school offerings that we have.
Dr. Jones, good evening. Members of the board, good evening. Thank you all very much for having us tonight. When I arrived on my first day at Flat Rock on July 25th, the summer school kids welcomed me there with open arms. It's been nine years since I've done that level of summer school program, so I was excited and thinking, okay, let's get back on this bicycle and see if we can ride it just like we did a while back. I've been doing secondary summer school for a while, so it was a pleasure to be there and to be greeted by the kids that first day. So we'll take you all just briefly through a few of the highlights. We did have 181 students to actually attend. We had 226 students that were recommended, grades K through 5. We had 181 to attend. Forty-five of those students unfortunately were not able to come, and we wanted to just give you all a quick average daily attendance rate as well. We had 79.6% average daily attendance. 145 kids across the 14 total days actually attended, and we'll give a quick little highlight and a shout-out to one of our fifth grade classes of the 13 days out of the 14 session. Mrs. Little had all of her students come 13 days out of the 14. She only had two absences the entire time, so we'll give her a little shout-out. We did an In the Garden STEM lessons throughout the course of the math and science...excuse me, the math and language arts remediation, and the students were treated to very rich literature-based STEM activities. They did an awful lot of wonderful hands-on activities throughout. Students read Westlandia and created civilizations and did presentations where Dr. Jones and several members of Central Office came down and did judging of the presentations, so they created civilizations from scratch. Students worked with actual live worms, did lots of measuring and counting, and actually built worm hotels and were able to take some of the things home with them. So they got a hands-on activity as well as very rich literature-based material as well. Jumping on to a couple of fun facts for you all, we had over 1,000 books to circulate throughout the hands of our 181 students throughout the course of our 14 days. Students were in the library visiting an awful lot and actually used some of the In the Garden materials in our actual courtyard, so library circulation was very high for summer school. We did have a number of students that had perfect attendance, and our intern, I wanted to give a quick little shout-out to Amanda Johnson, who is our special ed lead teacher at Flat Rock, and she actually did some internship hours for her administrative degree, and she actually decided she wanted to recognize the special attendance students, and so she presented, created and designed certificates for them and presented to those kids the last day of school with a special treat for recognition for that. We also had a high school volunteer, Ms. Elizabeth McCombs, joined us. It was a special pleasure for me. As Elizabeth is a rising senior, I taught Elizabeth years ago in fifth grade, so to have her come back and work at summer school, she was under the guidance of Kathy Blair, and she came to work with us. She actually took the lead role in some of the student recognitions that we did. We did a gardener of the week activity to highlight some of the STEM lessons, and Elizabeth took pictures of all the kids and created a lovely display bulletin board, and then we actually did some random trivia drawings and did a grand gardener for all of the four weeks of summer school, and the kids were treated to prizes. So, on to the data that you all might be interested in most. All the students showed growth over the course, specifically measured over with math and language arts. You'll notice that the fourth and fifth grade really showed a great amount of growth as far as the math pre- and post-test. I did want to have you all note that the first and second grade students did not do a traditional pre- and post-test, so their data is not included. We did get some measurements for them based on specific skill development, and the primary focus was areas of measurement, computation, and fractions, where our primary focus is for math. For our reading, we dug into the variety of programs. We used leveled literacy interventions. We used Wilson and Foundation programs. And the fifth grade and the first grade kids really demonstrated a high amount of growth with reading. We measured comprehension for you all on the principal's report versus a total pre- and post-assessment of all the different skills that were measured because a variety of pre- and post-assessments were used. So to give you all kind of an apples-to-apples measure, we did go ahead and pick out a particular skill and measured reading comprehension across those areas. And then kindergarten readiness, we had 33 students working with two of our teachers, Amy Daniel and Ellen Valcourt, working in the pre-K program to look at kindergarten readiness. With 33 students to actually register for the program, 32...excuse me, 33 participated. Thirty-two were reassessed at the end of our 14-day period, and it really gives us a chance to kind of catch some of the kids early. You'll note down at the bottom of the slide that two have already been receiving some services. We did have some additional referrals to come from our screenings at the summer school session, and you'll notice too that all of our kids demonstrated growth. We had some of our students demonstrate as high as 25 points of growth in a 14-day period, so those kiddos were really working hard, and Ellen and Amy did an outstanding job with them. They also had a couple of great instructional assistants that provided a lot of hands-on work. Those kids also did participate a little bit in the STEM activities as well. They didn't do a lot of the literature-based material. They did have some read alouds and things that they participated in, some of the hands-on activities, but all of our students demonstrated growth from a range of 4 to 25. So, thank you all very much. At this time, I'll turn this over to Michelle Martin for her secondary.
Good afternoon, or evening, rather. So as you can see, we had several programs that go on in our secondary summer programs. So we have students that are coming in for credit recovery, so those are students who didn't pass during the school year, primarily English and math. And then we have students who are coming in for online programs. So some of that is credit advancement to jump ahead for help in PE. We also have students who are using our online services through Edge Annuity to take some credit recovery courses or, again, for some credit advancement. And we also have our econ and personal finance online. So those are the things that we had going on, and as you can see in the pictures here, we also have our middle school group, and they're represented in text on our next slide. But they come in for Algebra I Boot Camp to prepare for the full-on Algebra I course, and they also are doing some SOL Academy, so to strengthen their math and reading skills. So one thing that was really exciting is they really engaged in our library a lot this year due to our makerspace. What you see there on the screen, they're in our 360-degree virtual reality goggles, and they were exploring caves which linked back to a book that they were reading in class. So it was a very engaging summer. Even our high school kids were spending a lot of time doing research in our library, research in our classrooms because we had Chromebooks in...the Chromebook carts in each of our summer classrooms as well. So just taking a look at our numbers, overall, between our online and our face-to-face opportunities, we had over 300 students. 126 of those were participating in online courses, and we had 97 students in our project graduation. So project graduation is our opportunity for students to pass the class but did not pass the SOL, so they need both of those to get a credit, a verified credit for graduation. So those kids are coming in very focused. They want to pass these tests because graduation is their ultimate goal. So we had lots of students coming in. We had a total of, I believe, 150 summer SOL tests going on. And we had...I think I've already said all of this, I'm sorry, jumped ahead. So we had 30 students who, for our English and our Algebra I, who all passed their courses. We had 22 students in our English IX for recovery, and they had the best experience. I heard from parents and from students who came in and said their summer school experience was fantastic, that they actually want to take English during summer school next year. So it was just a very engaging time for them. They were very motivated. The attendance was extremely high for that group of students, and it was 20 boys and two girls in that class. But it was really such an exciting class. There was lots of energy going in that class every time you walked by. So that's about the gist of our summer programs for secondary. On to Dr. Amahundro for summer camps.
Our summer camp program has been growing over the course of the last few years, and that has been coordinated by Tracy Engel, and she is not here tonight, but just wanted to tout a few of the things that she accomplished during that time. We had 14 different camps that were offered throughout the summer. We ended up serving 295 students, but 61 of those were repeaters in some camp, but that's exciting that we know that they're taking advantage of multiple camps. You can see that we expanded some of our offerings this year. The Heads Up Hands-On Camp. We had a First Responders Camp that was brand-new this year. That was CPR, looking at the AD machine, having those dummies that are upstairs. If you've ever walked past the nursing classroom, you can see those, and they kind of give you a start as you walk by there, and you see all of them in there. But they got to do that camp as well. So some nice offerings that we had this year that were expanded upon from last year, mostly done in the month of July, a few that were in late June. And then I wanted to also note a few other summer opportunities, and those were around literacy. We had Reading by Design, which has been our former Passport Program that we partnered with the library, that we received the NACO Award for last year. We had five sessions this year. You can see what some of those opportunities were. The Code-A-Thon was new. We had Mosley Architects who partnered with us this year. They're the ones that are working on the middle school project. They came in and worked on building design with the students. And always popular are our Arts and Sciences programs that we had. First session had about 75 students, and we averaged about 40 students or 40 children, not necessarily our students, because it is open to the general public throughout the summer. And then our summer book club is an initiative at high school for students who may not want to do the traditional summer reading program of reading a book and writing a paper and analyzing it, where we get different staff members at all levels, elementary, middle, high, as well as Central Office, who select a book, and you can see some of the books that were selected for summer reading. They meet with the students either face-to-face online several times throughout the summer, and then the students are evaluated by that teacher or Central Office employee and provided a score for how they did in their summer reading. Personally, I did one this summer and had a great engaging conversation with the folks that were in my summer reading group. I mean, I think it's a neat opportunity to look at reading for the summer for enjoyment in a different way. So we had about 150 students participate in that. And the final thing is, this was a huge undertaking this summer, and I just need to make sure that I thank all the folks that participated. Our instructional specialists, the four-course specialists, Kathy Blair, Tracy Engel, Libby Kitten, and Meredith Perry, they create all of the lessons for the elementary summer school. So that whole In the Garden program, the STEM focus, the individual lessons, they each take a week, and they develop the literature program, what the math component is going to be, what the science component is going to be, how we might be doing some project-based assessments with those students. They do all of that and the planning for that. We also had a lot of change this summer at the administrative level, so we had some folks that started with summer school, Mr. Ringstaff and Dr. Martin at the secondary level, and then Michelle Martin jumped in, and we had a couple of different folks that Dr. Powers mentioned that were helpful. Ms. Worrell started the program. Ms. Fopp was involved for a while, as well as Amanda Johnson, who was the intern. Those were the coordinators and the administrators. We had over 70 faculty and staff participating in the academic programs, as well as the summer camp programs and the book club, so different staff involved in different ways. And then I have to also thank the technology and testing staff. They were a huge help as we got those 150 students through some SOL testing this summer, and that was Jeff Dorrett and his team, including Donna Horn and Trevor Pruitt. So a big thanks to everyone who helped with summer camps this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions or comments for any of the presenters? Ms. Emel?
Well, I always have a comment because my children always like to go to the summer camps, although I have to say, my son did not sign up for any, and when I told him I was going to sign up for him, he said, no, that wouldn't be necessary, but of course it was. And so the Sunday before, he let me know, why did I sign him up for the cross-country camp? And because it has nothing to do with soccer. And so I said, well, you know, just go and listen for me, and listen to the part about nutrition and drinking water. So anyway, all I have to say is, they must have done miracles because by the time I picked him up at 1:00, he was all excited about going to cross-country camp. So that is the first time he has done that. He did the basketball camp, which they always do a nice job with. And then my daughter, she went to a dance camp. That wasn't on here, I noticed, so you have a few more to add to that. She always enjoys that, and then she did the Tech Divas. And since I see Mrs. Samuels is here, I, as one of the instructors, I just need to say what a wonderful job she does with those young girls. And my daughter came home the last day of camp and informed me that she knew what she wanted for her birthday, which is until next May, and Christmas, that she would need to have a 3D printer. And of course, she would need to have a new...a computer to go with that. So I appreciate you teaching me all these wonderful things, and it does make Christmas shopping a little bit easier knowing in advance. Not that she's getting it, but anyway. So I really...I do appreciate, again, not having to drive my children into town to have a wonderful educational and fun experience during the summertime. So thank you.
Now, any other questions? I think there might be some volunteers to add to the Christmas list at the Emel House. Mr. Cole?
Yes, just once again, I like Ms. Emel. I want to thank her staff for doing it. We all know that students lose academic skills over the summertime, and the more we can get involved with activities like this where they're learning in less traditional environments, it's great. So thank you to all the staff that were involved. I'm glad to see it expanding, open, continuing to expand in the future.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cole. Any other questions?
Thank you to all of you all.
Absolutely.
It's wonderful.
I agree, and I was very impressed with the titles of some of the books that you had in your summer book club. Very interesting.
Yes.
So, Dr. Jones, which book was yours?
I didn't do it this year, unfortunately.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I took the year off this year, so I'll have to get back into it next year.
All right, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
If, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I do want to recognize Ms. Martin and Dr. Powers. It's a difficult job balancing your regular job and doing summer school on top of it, but both of these...both of these women were new to their jobs, new to their school, and jumped right in without any complaining, and really did an outstanding job at both locations. So I just want to recognize and thank them for their hard work in a new position. Well done.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, I believe that takes us to recognition, Dr. Jones.
Yep, that one recognition.
So tonight, we'd like to recognize Ms. Blythe Samuels for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. It is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th-grade mathematics or science teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. This year, Ms. Samuels has been selected as one of four Virginia state-level finalists for this prestigious award, and what makes her recognition most notable is that she was selected based on her work in computer science education. Blythe is truly an exceptional leader, innovator, and educator in this emerging K-12 discipline, and we've done a lot of work...I'm going off script. We've done a lot of work in the last year as we've been working through deeper learning and going to conferences and meetings. Libby Kitten took a group to the National STEM Conference, and the computer science that has been led by Mrs. Samuels is second to none, not only in the state but in the nation. So very proud of all that she does, and I'm getting chill bumps because that's awesome. As a state-level finalist, Blythe's application's been forwarded to the National Science Foundation's National Selection Committee for consideration for the Presidential Award. In the coming months, Blythe will be publicly recognized by the Virginia Board of Education as well as several other mathematics and computer science organizations in Virginia at their annual meetings. Would you like to come down, be recognized?
Yes. [applause] Yes. [applause] Mr. Chairman, a moment of indulgence, if I could. I just want to recognize, this is Ms. Samuels, I believe, second time as a state finalist. We also had Ms. Adcock, who was a state finalist and national or state winner, and Dr. Martin, when her time in the classroom, was also a state finalist for this award in mathematics. So to have so many outstanding, state-nationally-recognized teachers in fields of science and math is really incredible. So congratulations, Ms. Samuels, as I said to you up here, good luck at the national level.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, Dr. Jones, I believe that takes us to our consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like...we're looking for approval of the consent agenda. We did not include principals' reports this month since we were...summer school was the bulk of that, but we will have principals' reports in September, and we'll include some of those activities that occurred over the summer as well, but certainly looking for approval of the consent agenda at this time.
Can I also say something to that, Dr. Jones?
Yes.
I'm glad you did that, and maybe we should make that as a no requirement in August and perhaps a couple other times in the year when time is so short and there's many things to be done. I'm thinking the holidays, either before or after. So we don't need them to be doing, as I termed it, busy work if we don't want our students doing busy work. Perhaps we could, you know, follow the same...
I'm sure the principals would be heartbroken by that, but if that's the will of the board, I'm sure that they'll be more than happy to oblige that request. I know they like putting the information together, but it does take a great deal of time, and if that's the will of the board, we'll certainly make those at a, you know, not as...not every month and during testing time.
Well, certain times during the year. I mean, and not to say...I enjoy reading them and getting information from them. Many, many times, parents will ask me questions, and of course, if it has to do with the negative nature, I can just think, okay, now that school, let me see, what did they tell me in the principal's report? And I can think of two or three positive things to, you know, come back with. So it's not...it's supposed to be...well, I look at it as a sharing tool, and so I...not as more work, though. I mean, pictures in a few sentences, you know, that, to me, I'm very visual. That covers a lot, too. So just my two cents. Thank you.
I'll just add, perhaps you could consider some ideas on ways that that could be addressed and...
We'll come back to you with some ideas.
Yeah, come back to us.
Yep.
All right, any...before we...any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? All right, do we have a motion regarding consent agenda? Is that a mo...
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so we took off.
We struck...
Nothing on there.
We struck an item out of...
Okay, none on the consent.
I'll make a motion.
We struck 6E, not nothing, out of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Four, oh, the motion carries. Dr. Jones, it takes you to your superintendents.
Yes, sir. The first item is to consider approval of the 2017-2018 Virginia High School League membership application. This is due on August 1st each year, and it includes our participation in Virginia High School League with the sports that we play at the Powhatan High School, as well as insurance information, number of athletes, that type of information. So it's been mailed with pup...with payment, with the chairman's signature, but we do need approval from the board.
Questions regarding the membership application?
So it's been mailed with payment, with the chairman's signature, but we do need approval from the board.
Questions regarding the membership application?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the membership application? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries four-oh. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next item is to consider approval of 2017-2018 student fees. You have a redlined version in board docs. You can see that there were no changes except for deletions of fees, the student planner, some health and PE and optional fees were removed, but the fee structure stays the same as last year. But policy, we do need those approved every year, even though there are no changes or additions.
All right, any questions about the fee schedule?
I just have a question. The things that are redlined, are those no longer going to be provided? Or are they, I mean, are just obsolete?
They're no longer required or using them. They're used, because with the Chromebooks, they don't need student planners. They'll be using electronic calendars and such, so...
Right. And we don't do uniforms anymore.
Correct.
We just wear shorts and t-shirts.
Right.
Okay.
And certainly, if students choose to use a student planner, they can purchase those anywhere and continue to do so.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding the fee schedule?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second to approve the 2017-2018 student fees schedule?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Cole, did you vote in the affirmative?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In the opposition, hearing none, is four-oh, the motion carries. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next is seeking approval for a resolution supporting Smart Beginnings. We had staff from Smart Beginnings, Greater Richmond, do a presentation at our workshop, and we are looking for approval of a resolutions which signifies our support of their new regional plan for school readiness 2017 to 2020.
I make a motion, we approve the Smart Beginnings Resolution.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Cole voted in the affirmative. It's, motion carries four-oh. Takes us to the next item, Dr. Jones.
Yes, sir. The last item that I have for you this evening is to recommend approval for the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case RE-17, that should read 1718, I believe, O-1, based on bona fide religious belief according to Virginia Code 22 dot one dash two fifty-four B-1, which authorizes school exemption for religious beliefs.
All right. Questions or comments? Ms. Ayers?
I have a question, just, and I don't know if it's, the 1718-01 was the disciplinary case number.
It's RE for religious exemption.
RB, okay. I didn't see that on here, but that's on the...
All right, so we are confident it's student case number RE-171901. Is that right?
Yes.
It should be 1718-01.
Seventeen eighteen-oh-one.
Yeah. It's RE-1718-01.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Ayers. All right, so is there a motion to approve student case RE-1718-01, request for religious exemption?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries four-oh. Takes us to our next steps and follow-up. Mr. Cole, would you like to start us off with that for the next steps and follow-up?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything for tonight. Just want to thank everybody for a smooth summer so far, and wish everybody luck in preparing for school.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. We hope, wish you safe travels on your return. I believe we indicated this earlier, but you are where this evening?
I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. What'd you say?
Where are you vacationing this evening, Mr. Cole?
I am south of Charleston, on the beach.
On the beach. Your weather is beautiful there, and ours is as well. We wish you safe travels on your return. Ms. Ayers?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just for next steps, we need to add the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to do it in September, at a workshop, maybe?
Yes, yeah. I didn't have an objection.
September workshop for the superintendent's evaluation. And the only other was the annual convention. Ms. Wilson, I will be attending. Mr. Cole, are you attending? You're going to be the voting rep, I believe.
No, I'm the voting rep. My intention is to attend for that day.
Okay.
As far as I know, I will, Ms. Ayers. Let me check my, everything else on my calendar to make sure.
Okay.
But as far as I know, right now, I will be attending.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
And just to thank everybody for a great summer. I wish I were young enough to be a student again and go through all that. It was, it was always so much fun for me to do the summer activities, and you all are so great at what you do. And thank you for all the time, the additional time, extra time that you all put in, your dedication to the students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Emel?
I don't have any.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I had the pleasure of attending the SBA training on, I believe it was July 17th, and it was an orientation for new chairman and vice chairman. Excellent training. I would be happy to make that information available. The handouts, there were no paper handouts, they were only electronic. If any of the board members would like to receive a copy of that, I would be more than happy to provide that to anyone. Also, I would like just to wish our staff well. There are lots and lots of young ladies and gentlemen that are getting ready. I see them in Walmart and other stores, busily picking up their back-to-school supplies. I know that you're excited. I, as a parent, am excited to wish my children well and send them back to school. And it's going to be a very exciting school year for us, just as it always is. And the last comment that I would make is that I am starting to receive lots of questions and comments, and it is very exciting for the public as they drive by, drive by our school and our new transportation facility. Now that we're bricking things up and starting to do some major construction, things are happening much more quickly. It's generating a lot of excitement in the community, and as they say, we live in exciting times. So it's a pleasure to be here and a part of that, and I thank each and every one of you for what you do, and welcome back from the summer. For those of you that had some time off, and for those of you that didn't, I hope that you do find a few days in the next couple to relax and enjoy, because September 5th or so, things will get a little more exciting for you. So that's all that I have this evening. Dr. Jones?
Just thanks to everybody for the, a great summer. We still got a few weeks left, but as we all know, once the calendar flips to August, we're in a school preparation mode. We had a great instructional retreat last week in training for teachers, so that always signifies kind of the ramp up to starting school. And we're looking forward to it, and I know that we're going to have a great year. So thanks to everybody for your efforts as we get ready for our kids to come back in September.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And what I think you may have just said is that if you haven't gotten your vacation in yet, it may be a little too late. So that brings us to our second public comment period of the evening. This is an opportunity for members of the public or our staff here to make a comment to the board. It's an opportunity for delegations or individuals requesting to be heard to come forward. There's a time limit of one minute per individual, or three minutes per group, with a fifteen-minute total time limit. We would ask that any speakers please address your comments to the full board, and if you would identify yourself by name and please provide us with your home address, that would be appreciated. Anyone wishing to make comment to the board this evening, please step forward to the podium. Once again, this is your opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to make comment to the board, please step forward. Seeing no movement, I will close the public comment period, and I believe that takes us